This is the Board of Selectmen's meeting for May 31st, 2016. We're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First report we're going to have is with the Town Administrator. Heather, please.
So, a couple of things to update the Board on. We haven't met in public or in on TV session in a couple of weeks at this point. First thing, safeguards to school. Our appraisals are all complete. The paperwork is currently in the hands of Town Council. They're working on preparing the order of taking. And the Select Board is meeting on this to vote on the order of taking on June 21st at 6:00 PM. Both of the property owners have been notified of the offers and have been sent return receipts, certified mail, and we've received those back. So, we're all good to go on that. And just a reminder, this is being funded for through Chapter 90 funds, including the council fees that are relevant to this. Any questions on that?
No.
Okay. The handrail project, we are still working on this. We have awarded the project to, I believe it is Lighthouse is the name of the company, contingent upon positive references and also completion of OSHA certifications and a few other documents we are waiting for on their part. They were the lowest out of the three bids that we received. Two of them were in the twenties and theirs was in the early or low $10,000, $11,000 range. The annual town report has been completed. Copies are available by outside the Town Clerk's office. Also, most departments have a copy. The library should if they do not already have one. And it's also available online. This year's annual town report also includes the breakdown of legal projects and the payroll for all employees for the year of 2015. So far, we have received positive feedback on those two additions. Projects that are currently under legal review, personnel policy procedure rules were reviewed and the Triple PB has reviewed them further on Thursday. They are working on setting up a meeting to do a public hearing on the personnel rules. Again, these affect mostly non-union employees. They are looking to set up a meeting towards the end of June. They have to make sure they publish the public hearing at least ten business days, working days, prior to the public hearing, at which point, once they have their hearing and they complete their hearing and find whatever findings they're going to have, they will then submit those results to the Select Board for final approval. Hopefully, at the end of June, so we can get these up and rolling for July 1st. Net solar metering credits contract that we had worked on, it was voted in favor of at town meeting. All the paperwork has been completed at this point. We're waiting to see if they need anything further. But Town Council's finished review and the contractor who is doing the project up in Deerfield has all the paperwork. Animal control contract has been signed and all the paperwork has been returned down to Westfield. We're just waiting on a return signature from the mayor and the city council. Community compact cabinet grants, as we've talked about previously, we have three. The first one was the fire department study, organizational operational study, and that has been completed. We are just finishing up the paperwork to return to the state so they finish processing the state funds for that. The human resource or the wage and classification chart, organizational chart, is still in progress with Don Jacobs. We are working on finishing up a couple of the job descriptions. We ran into a few issues because folks who had previously signed up to do job description reviews with individual employees weren't always available to do them. So, there were quite a few that were left undone. So, we are trying to cover those with templates and work from there. And we're seeing where that goes. I'm meeting with Don Jacobs next week to try to finish those up. We can't do the organizational chart until we complete the job description so that there's a clear sight of authority in pieces. And that piece is also needed for the third study, which is the governmental structure draft charter study that is being done by Bernie Lynch. So, we are still in the process of that one. We are hoping to have a presentation from him mid-August, I believe. And there's one last community compact cabinet grant. That's a regional one we're doing with other communities in the Hampshire Regional School District. And that is to look at the broadband infrastructure, looking at all of the fiber optic cables that have been installed and also looking to see how we can better utilize those services and consolidate the costs so we are getting the service at the most affordable price. Upcoming weeks, we have a new building meeting tomorrow. That's something we do with the ZBA, Building Department, Health Department, Highway Department, Planning Board, et cetera, representative from each, just to talk about anything, new projects coming up, concerns, et cetera, so we can communicate amongst everyone. Department head meeting and emergency management meeting are both on Thursday. We have an audit review with the Select Board on Thursday. I have Leadership Pioneer Valley, the leadership program I've been involved in since September. It has a final meeting tomorrow and next week and then the week after that. So, it's like three in a row. So, I will be in and out. Next Thursday, I also have a Small Town Ministries Massachusetts Annual Meeting in Sturbridge all day. Other ongoing projects, Cook County Road, as you know, has been approved at the annual town meeting. We're still working with the Kestrel Land Trust. According to Mark Wamsley from the Kestrel Land Trust, we're waiting on a couple of things. They have to figure out East Hampton's schedule for the community preservation applications because they have to go through the same process we did. And they also are looking to get going on the land grant application and figure out who's going to be doing what piece of it. Once the CPC equivalent in East Hampton approves, it also has to go through their city council for approval. Police chief contract, we're in progress, in process of finishing that. Collective bargaining agreements, the police and dispatch, we should be just about done them at this point. I just received the electronic versions last week. So, I will add the MOU materials that were agreed to into those contracts and get them back to the union for signature. Same thing with the highway department. Theirs is already in their hands. They're just waiting for their equivalent of the Select Board to sign on the union side. Greenway project is still in progress currently. Just for folks to know, we are working on arranging different meetings with different parties involved to continue moving forward on that. HVAC system at the library, I had spoken with Barbara last week and they had hired a consultant to figure out what they really needed. We are still waiting for those specs from the consultant. I am in a deadpan till I have specs to move off of. Green Communities. So, as we know, the Green Community General Bylaw had passed a town meeting. It's currently been sent to the Attorney General's Office for approval. Shouldn't be any problem since we use the template from the state and this is the one that everyone has been using. This is the stretch code. I don't know what I called that a minute ago. It's a little warm up here, so. We also received correspondence from Jim Barry, who is the consultant and the gentleman who works for the Green Communities Program for the state, that we actually have an opportunity to work with a pilot UMass program where the students and the resources they have available at no cost to the town would be able to assist us in working on criteria number three of the Green Communities Act, which is looking at putting together a 20 percent reduction plan. So, first of all, we have to survey all of our energy uses and then we have to come up with a 20 percent reduction plan over the course of a few years. This is something that they are willing to work with us on. I actually received correspondence from Dwayne Breger, who is the Director of the UMass Clean Energy Extension, and he is willing to sit down and talk with me on this. So, as long as the Board has no objections, I'd like to move forward with having them assist us in this project at no cost.
Any concern? I guess you're free to go.
Okay. Permitting guide is still in progress. We're trying to get things so that they look right and also update. A couple of folks have changed their fee schedule since we have started this project. Financial plan, our financial plan for the town is still ongoing. This is something we had worked on with Finance Committee last year. Treasurer, the accountant, myself got it pretty much to the end stage. We just need to finalize and check a couple of things and we will be ready to go. This is something that was also recommended to us to do by the auditors. The next thing we're going to be working on is payroll sheets. A few years ago, these were distributed or at least attempted to be done. This year, we're trying to get them more in sync and have them done for everybody. The auditors were looking for something like this. So, essentially, what it is, is it would be like a different version of a PCF for each individual. All the information's entered into Excel and then it mail merges into one form sheet. Has a person's name, their date of hire. Then it also has what their FY '16 hourly pay was at the end of FY '16, what their FY '17 pay is, because remember, there's a 2 percent COLA increase. And then any other details, if it's a union, if it's, you know, if there's vacation, personal sick time. The only problem we run into is with the change of the personnel rules. We don't know what's going to be for the non-union employees because if the new rules go into effect, then those numbers change as opposed to the old ones. But we can do them actually pretty cleanly for the union employees very quickly and that's the majority. We'd like to try to get those signed by the employees, their department heads and also the Select Board before the end of the fiscal, so in the next month. Just so we have a clean sheet of paper that's in everyone's file and we no longer get written up on the same thing in the audit each year. Let's see, what else do we have here? Code Red, so one of the things I've been discussing with the police chief is looking at having the dispatchers actually have control over Code Red. And I think this was one Charlie's suggestions once upon a time. So, we will work on this thing start freeing up in the middle of summer, getting them trained. So, if there's any emergencies, if there's a road that's closed and we're not regularly scheduled or if it's something they can easily input because they're getting the information firsthand and the quickest, they can easily take two minutes when they have a moment and enter the information, send out an alert if needed. Lost child, suspect on the run, whatever it may be. Other updates, Black Birch Vineyard was approved for their extension of premises. If you remember, we, the Board had had a hearing on this and actually voted to approve it back in April. We subsequently sent it to the ABCC, Alcohol Beverage Control Commission, and they have approved what's called a Form 43, which is our corresponding form to them. So, we have issued a new license for Black Birch, including the extension of their premises out into the area that is contiguous grass to the actual vineyard where people go inside of the prem- I don't even know what it's called, the building, the current building, I guess, would be the word. So, I have that for the Board to sign tonight. I think that's actually all my updates unless there's any more questions for me.
Could you elaborate on the Gwener Cook property and how East Hampton, how long is it going to take East Hampton for approval or, I mean, I know you don't know, but just give us a general idea of-
I don't know.
Yeah, what do they say?
They said they don't know.
When is their next meeting, do you know? Or do they have weekly meetings or?
So, they didn't, they unfortunately didn't add me to their agenda schedule, so I don't, I don't know. That email from Mark Wamsley that I read you was sent to me at 4:27 and that was the most updated information he had, which was, I'm trying to pin down their schedule. So, he is more involved than I am and he doesn't know.
Okay.
Any more questions?
Okay, Select Board updates, liaison reports, anything new?
Nothing new. I met with the fire chief last week and I have another meeting with him tomorrow. He's just bringing me up to speed on where we are and trying to come up with some plans on where to go.
Okay, we're going to discuss that tonight with him, so that'll help.
Yes, okay.
I have nothing new, Virginia is here if she wants to say anything. CPC, no.
Neither from community preservation or the school.
And nothing new, nothing with Nilda, the zoning board.
Okay. Well, I have something to say. I was extremely impressed with the ceremonies yesterday for Memorial Day. Jackie, I think you and the town Veterans Agent did a stellar job coordinating and bringing this all together. And my hat's off to you.
Thank you. I hope we did justice for the veterans.
The comments I heard were extremely complimentary. I think you did a good job. I think you really touched on with a lot of people.
Thank you.
And especially with the fact that it's going to rain, so we don't have a parade and it's organized inside a school and to have more people there than what I believe was present at town meeting.
Ooh.
There was a lot of people in that room.
Well, I had a lot of help from Richard Leclerc and his partner Nancy Hughes. I didn't do it on myself, by myself and also Jerry, Puck Hat.
Yep.
He was very helpful, too. So, I didn't do it by myself, that's for sure.
Well, it was well done by everyone. I was very impressed and it was an opportunity for me to sit in the back and watch. You get to see a different perspective when you're sitting in the back watching. All right. Reports from departments, boards and committees. Well, Mr. Floyd, you're not a board, you're not a committee, but you're in that quasi-position. Would you like to give us an update on town meeting?
Wherever I am, Southampton Town Moderator.
You're here.
Robert Floyd, 15 E Street. As I annually do, I give a few words and comments about our annual town meeting. We had a moderator's information session, May 5th. It was live broadcast, that was successful. There was two separate sessions the next Thursday. That was also live from East Hampton Media, our channel 191. A lot of people learned, they got a lot of facts. I engage with the authors of the articles. I meet with the Select Board. I meet with the town accountant, the Chair of the CPA, Town Administrator with the Deputy Moderator, Board of Selectmen when they're available, Police Chief, Fire Chief, Planning Board. And I invite anyone who would like to speak to me. So, it's fun, but it's really busy. I believe I have a pulse on what's going on and what to expect. Came pretty near within a half dozen of the maximum I expected at the town meeting. We, I opened the annual town meeting, we had 165 registered voters, read the warrant, and the meeting unanimously elected Carl Keener, our Deputy Moderator, for another year. Fifteen speakers were individually voted on and approved by the town meeting in case we needed them not to interrupt the meeting each time somebody may need or had an opportunity to speak non-voters. There were 30 articles. The budget article, as is prerogative of the town moderator, divided that into nine separate sections and each section was voted on individually. We had a couple of amendments. We had one tabled article. Nine articles required a two-thirds vote, met that requirement. One met the four-fifths requirement. And one reconsideration, which was the first time I ever allowed that and we needed to do that and that was approved and we corrected an error. And we had approximately over 40 votes that evening. Record time, two hours and 15 minutes. Everyone cooperated. Everyone faced the moderator, spoke with respect and honor to the meeting and to the process. And it worked and based on comments immediately after the meeting, it was a favorite annual town meeting and probably the favorite or the best to many. So, it went well. Any questions?
I want to know how you are going to raise that bar now and reach that again.
Next year.
It gets, it gets, I love it. I love the process and it's a separate concept and I don't wear the hat every day of the year, of course. But it's exciting to see the community and to see everyone interact, as was yesterday. And just really, I love Southampton.
It was community.
Yes.
Yes.
That's what it's all about. We're all here on Mother Spaceship in Southampton, so we're going to get along. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, we're waiting for the Board of Health to show up, so I think we'll open time for the public now. Anyone that'd like to address the Board? Barbara Laflambeault, welcome.
Thank you. I'm Barbara Laflambeault, 20 Cook Road, Southampton. I came to thank the voters of Southampton. Thank you, thank you, thank you for the Cook Road County Road support that you provided. There are other people, though, that I wish to recognize that played a huge role in the whole process. It's taken well over a year. And so, these are just some of the people and the agencies that I'd like to recognize for their efforts. The Pioneer Valley Regional Planning Commission is the agency that provided the initial funding for Patty Cambrini, who sits on the Board of BayPAC. She's their executive director. So, they provided that funding and to provide the leadership for Patty Cambrini. Also, to Mark Newman for his early recognition and encouragement. Rosemary Arnold and Mary Lou Splain and the Winding River Land Conservancy for encouragement and funding early on in the project. To the Southampton Conservation Commission members for their recognition of the awesome potential of this land over the Barnes Aquifer. If you in your travels in Southampton encounter a woman about five feet two inches tall whose energy is only surpassed by her enthusiasm, you have probably encountered Marla Hank. She is a real dynamo and I think she attended every meeting, whether it was in Southampton or East Hampton, on this particular project. To the Town Administrator, Heather, who was invaluable in coordinating and attending those meetings for the past year. Sometimes it takes somebody to get us all together and say, yes, I can come or no, I can't. Key to the understanding of water for the significance of both East Hampton and Southampton was the video presentation on Channel 191 by Smith College Professor Robert Newton prior to May 12th. He has been a key member of BayPAC and has expanded our understanding and appreciation of what happens here in Southampton and our use of water and how it affects not only Southampton but East Hampton and the entire region. Southampton was incredibly fortunate to have the Kestrel Land Trust agree to undertake a leadership role in coordinating this project. Mark Wamsley, with his quiet, unassuming manner, kept us all on track so as not to stray from our ultimate goal. I cannot give enough recognition for the role that the CPA Committee and especially Virginia Ahart have contributed to the successful town vote on May 17th. That vote was a tribute to the esteem with which the voters hold Virginia. That vote clearly showed how much confidence we have in her leadership. Michael Buehler's support at town meeting cannot be overlooked. His acknowledgement that there is enough CPA funding for both the Greenway and the land purchase was an enormous boost. Thank you, Michael. I wish to also thank the Select Board for their moving this project forward. It takes a lot of people and we had a lot of people pitch in and help out to see that it got done. We're not done yet. East Hampton has a significant role. But I think for East Hampton people to see how strong the support was in Southampton, I think that's a very, very positive message to them. I'd still like to thank my family. There are 11 heirs and trying to keep 11 people happy, especially when it comes to money, is not always an easy thing. So, I really do appreciate their role in standing with me, standing together with me. I thank you all, especially the voters of Southampton. Thank you.
Anyone else like to approach for open time?
Yeah, I just had something to Barbara say.
The video-
Virginia Ahart, thank you for approaching.
Virginia Ahart, Chair of the CPA. Yeah. Wonderful presentation by Robert Newton, which was filmed and went onto our website, has traveled far. It has been viewed in the Pennsylvania area simply because my son was excited. Now, he didn't go through the whole thing, so he didn't see the end of it. But he's been telling his friends in Pennsylvania, they should, if they have any question about water, they should look at our website, Southampton's website, and look at that video. And I think that's quite a tribute to also our people who do the videotaping and getting it onto our website. He called up and he's, my son is talking to me. Great. I said, well, what did you think about mine? Oh, he said, I cut it off at the end. He said, I didn't know that there was anything more.
Very good. Well, see, there's no other speakers. I guess we're going to move into continued business. We actually have two PCFs that we need to review. One's the water technician, one's the assessor. Any preference on which one we want to start?
Matt's here.
Then I guess we're doing water. That PCF was put on hold because of a concern. I, if I remember right, Jim, you had the concerns with this?
No, I didn't have any concerns with it.
John did and John's not here. Matt, you want to approach the podium for Matt?
Sure.
Tell us who you are so the audience-
Matt Christie, Chairman of Water Commission, Middle Road.
And this is basically a 31-hour-a-week position, full-time? Do you have funding available in your budget?
Yes.
I think that's, is that Michael Connel?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
Less than 31 hours.
Do you want to increase it?
Well, that helps. Well, you know, I only have a couple of sheets of paper in front of me here. So, this is 18 hours a week, 52 weeks, okay?
Correct.
And it's been approved by PPC, not PPB Board. It's been approved by the department heads, been approved by Finance Committee. Selectmen want to make a motion?
So, move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Approved.
Thank you. We'll notify the candidate.
That was easy, man, huh? Soon as I got the right paper in front of me. All right, the next one is the Assessor, Mike O'Connell. That one is Heather. Now, this is lined out and changed. Is this changed with Finance and everybody being on board with this?
That is how we received the PCF at the last Select Board meeting.
So, Finance hasn't reviewed this yet?
I believe Finance Committee did not approve it. That's why the Select Board, when we met at the Norris School, said the Board did not wish to approve that until they heard from Finance. Finance has subsequently sent an email to everyone, and I think you have that email with you as well, explaining their concerns of why they didn't approve that PCF. And at the time, the Select Board had just asked to follow up with Finance to see why they did or did not approve.
And the report from Liaison to the Assessor's office?
I met with the assessors earlier today and they indicated early on when they advertised for the position that they had approved range. They gave them, they didn't give them an exact number per hour, but they gave them a range. And when they hired Mike, they weren't sure how this was going to work out. So, they thought to themselves that they would go in conservatively and that they would go to the low end of that range that was approved. And I guess they put him on probation for 90 days and he has proved to be an excellent employee. They're really happy with him. He's supposed to be working for 31 hours and because they're so far behind in that department, he's working 40, so he's working- department, he's working 40, so he's working nine hours extra at no pay, and they're very, very, very happy with him. They said this is in the 2016 budget, and they have the money within their budget at this point to cover that. It's not a problem for him for 2016. So I, I would like to make a motion to approve it.
Here's the dilemma. This board has always stood with the protocol of having the Personnel Board review it and approve it, the Finance approve it, and then the Board of Selectmen. We don't have a signature from the Finance Committee approving this.
But what the Board of Assessors was telling me, that they approved the range early on.
I understand that.
And they went in at the low end of the range for a 90-day trial, figuring if it was, if it worked out, then they would bring him back up to the 23 and change. So that, that's what their, their right was approved, but when they hired him, now that he's hired, even though the 90 days has passed, they feel that he should get the amount that was approved. That, you know, that's what their...
I followed it.
Yeah, that's, but now, I guess Finance thinks it's a new, it's just, it's an increase, but, I mean, that's, that's what they were telling me.
Actually, 2377 from Michael Connel.
Yes.
Yes. So you're going on a policy that the PBB has to okay before this happens?
Well, Finance, it's the...
I mean Finance, I mean Finance, I'm sorry, Finance, but isn't the Assessor's office a little bit more independent? I mean, do they...
We still got to go through the policy, we're doing for the town, we're supposed to be doing that with everybody, we're doing it with police, we're doing it with fire, we're doing it with highway.
Heather, what do you know about this? In the Finance Committee, Michael O'Connell. Charlie?
Am I speaking, am I recognized?
You're recognized.
Okay. So that, the PCF, so a couple of things. First of all, Jim, I'm not sure what you said, if you said he's working over 31 hours or if he's working for free. He's not working for free. I just, I just want to make sure, I think you said lower rate. He's not working for free. Whatever hours he works, we pay him, and he does not work more than 40 hours a week, because beyond 40 would be overtime.
Okay, I was under the impression that he was working a minimum of 31, and I thought he was...
No, you can't, you can't work for free, it's a wage-hour violation, it gets us into big trouble, it's not good.
I was misunderstood, yeah.
I just want to make sure people at home did not hear that piece, and all of a sudden, we're going to have newspaper articles tomorrow. So that, that's that piece, as far as that goes. On the other thing, I have no additional information, other than the information that was sent from the Finance Committee, because it was requested by the Select Board to inquire.
Right, so that's what we're trying to improve, like it's ready enough, pretending to be, like extra hours and these.
The money's there, the town accountant verified that. The problem with the whole thing is the fact that our protocol is Finance reviews and approves before it goes in front of this board.
And we're locked with that?
We are the Board of Selectmen, you can modify things if you want to modify things. We just want to caution the board that if you do that, then you're breaking basically a prior protocol.
But what they're telling me is that the, the range was approved, they were approved as a range.
I understand that.
And they hired him at the, they thought they were doing a good thing by, by going as low as they possibly could for a 30-day trial, a 90-day trial.
I have...
And then they wanted to make the adjustment at that point, and that's when they're running into the wall here.
I have no problem with what they were doing and what they were trying to accomplish, I have no problem with that at all. I'm just, as the Chair, trying to caution the board that if we go in a different direction with this, you're breaking protocol. I mean, you're not going to get a major penalty and have to go back three steps or anything like that, but...
Yeah, I understand that.
It's just, is that what you want to do? Heather, do you know when Finance is meeting again?
Two weeks. They, unless there's still meeting at this moment.
Mike had already dropped off some PCFs with me, I can go check if you'd like me to.
Does he have this?
He does not, because you have this.
Then how about this? We table it for now, we let her go over to Finance and give it to them, and then we'll go into executive session on the other issue, and then by then, they'll have time to process.
If there's still meeting, I can run up.
Would you please?
May I meet up?
Yes, you may.
Okay.
Does that work?
Let's, let's see what happens.
I mean, you know? All right, so we're going to jump into executive session now. Executive session's under Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21, Number 6, to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property, real estate. If the chairman declares an open meeting may be detrimental effect on negotiation positions in a political body, and it certainly do. Roll call, vote?
Labrie, aye.
Chair's aye.
Kinnocky, aye. All right, we're going to take a two-minute break, so everybody can leave the room that's not involved in executive session.